Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Tuesday, October 15 Sioux Falls City Council Meeting. Thank you for being here tonight. We'll go ahead and get started by reading our role, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
Sale?
Here.
Starr?
Here.
Staley?
Here.
Recky?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Kylie?
All right. Tonight, we are honored to have Jeannie Ommend here with us. Jeannie is with the Direct Line Prayer Center, right across the street from City Hall, if you don't know where that is, right next to Ship, please. She's going to give her invocation this evening. So, Jeannie, thanks for being here. If you would all rise for that and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance, right after.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this gathering, this coming together as a body united for the good of this city and all of its citizens. We thank you that your presence, oh Lord, is in this place and abides in our city and in each of us. We thank you, God, for our mayor and each council member who carry the responsibility of the welfare and decision-making of our city. May your hand be upon them. In Ephesians 4, verses 1 through 3, it says, "I therefore, the prisoner of the Lord, beseech you to walk worthy of the calling with which you were called, with all lowliness and gentleness, with long suffering, bearing with one another in love, endeavoring to keep the unity of the Spirit in the bond of peace." God, may your will be made known in the hearts and desires of each man and woman on this council, to serve our great city in spirit and in truth. I ask, Holy Spirit, that you guide each one with integrity, wisdom, sound judgment, and fairness in all matters set before them tonight. I declare a spirit of unity over this body, those gathered here tonight. We desire, God, to be in your will in every matter regarding our city and all who dwell within. I ask your blessing and your favor, God, over the people of this community and in all situations concerning their well-being and the good of this city. As our state motto so beautifully declares, "Under God, the people rule," we thank you, God, that under you we find that favor and blessing. In Jesus' mighty name, I pray.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening. We have some special guests here tonight. As you can see, we have a full council chambers. So, hello, kiddos. This is the interactive part. You can say hi. Some blue-ribbon schools, right, as I understand it? It's a tremendous honor to be named a National Blue Ribbon School by the U.S. Department of Education. The National Blue Ribbon Schools' program recognizes public and private elementary, middle, and high schools based on a school's overall academic performance or their progress in closing achievement gaps among student subgroups. Each year, the U.S. Department of Education seeks out and celebrates great American schools, schools that demonstrate that all students can achieve to high levels. The National Blue Ribbon School Award is the highest award a school can earn and affirms the hard work of students, educators, families, and communities in creating safe and welcoming schools where students master challenging content. Tonight, I am deeply honored and excited to announce that we have three elementary schools and one junior high school receiving this highly prestigious award. Tonight, we have the honor of being joined by three elementary schools and one junior high that will be traveling next month to Washington, D.C., to be recognized by Secretary of Education Betsy DeVos and the U.S. Department of Education. It's also heartening to see four of the six blue-ribbon schools from South Dakota here in Sioux Falls. So, I would ask that Principals Stacy Sharon, Michelle Shields, and Wade Sharon, and the Bishop O'Gorman students and teachers, please come forward. You can clap for them while they come up here. Come on up here, guys. Good job. All right. You come stand by me. We'll face these nice-looking people up here. Hi, kiddo. Guys all look so nice. So, on behalf of the city of Sioux Falls, it's my honor to congratulate these Bishop O'Gorman Catholic Schools, who have just recently been named 2019 Exemplary High Performing National Blue Ribbon Schools: O'Gorman Junior High, St. Catherine Drexel Elementary School, and St. Mary's Elementary School. This is a tremendous accomplishment as only 50 of over 34,500 total private schools in the nation are recognized with this honor each year. Think about that, only 50 out of 35,000. So, let's take the opportunity to applaud all the students, staff, and families from these schools. You guys can go ahead and sit back down. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. Thank you for being here. Okay, and now I would like to ask Principal Lynn Gillette and the students from the Challenge Center to please come forward. Are they here? All right, come on up. Yeah. Wow, what a big group you got. How you doing, wild man? Come on in here. Good. Okay. So, on behalf of the city of Sioux Falls, it's my honor to congratulate the Challenger Center, who has been named a 2019 Exemplary High Performing National Blue Ribbon School. The Challenge Center is a specialized school within the Sioux Falls School District, serving students grades 2 through 5 across the city who are identified as highly gifted. The school is one of only 312 public blue-ribbon schools being recognized nationally with this honor out of the, listen to this, 312 schools were recognized out of 98,000 total public schools in the U.S. So, let's take an opportunity to applaud these kiddos and their teachers. All right. Thank you, guys, for being here. Congratulations. That's great. And it's not inappropriate. If you want to leave, you can leave if you want. Okay. I'll give you a chance to do that now if you'd like. It's a school night.
Get your reading in.
All right. Counsel, we'll move on with item number five, which is our consent agenda. Look for a motion on that.
Move to approve Erickson.
Second, Selberg.
All right. Motion to approve by Erickson, seconded by Selberg. Any discussion on that, counsel? Counsel Recky?
I'd like to make a motion to move item two to the regular agenda.
All right. So, want to pull item number two? Enough contracts?
Yes.
Okay? Any other changes? Seeing none, we'll take a vote, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right. That passes seven to zero. We'll move on to our next item, which is our regular agenda approval.
Move to approve Erickson.
Second, Sale.
Second on that, seconded by Counselor Sale. Any discussion on that one, counsel? All right. We'll take a vote on that, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Okay. That passes seven to zero. We are now at the public input portion of our agenda tonight. As a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per person, and in total lasts no more than 30 minutes during general public input. The public is welcome to speak on any topic that does not appear later on in the agenda. For regular agenda items following general public input, comments are limited to three minutes, unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. At this time, sir, I'd ask you to come on forward. Clerk, please note our time is 7:10. Good evening.
Good evening. Dennis Crowell, 26, 24, Regency Court. I'm here to address the safety concern I have with a ash tree in my parking. A storm a couple of weeks ago took a big limb off, broke the street light, and the street pole down. And in the process of doing that, it left like only half of the other limb that it was attached to, as you can see in the picture. And so, that whole piece up there is totally weakened. And I was being concerned about it. I called Duane of the Forestry Department, talked to him, tried to explain the situation. He said, well, he didn't seem too concerned. There's limbs and branches broke everywhere, and he wasn't going to run his screws all over town. So, I kind of just blew it off. And then, a week ago last, not this past Saturday, but this previous one, when we had that 40 and 50 mile an hour winds, kind of like today, I had noticed, because I was watching it, because I thought, Jesus, it could come down, you know. And in the crotch of the tree, there's a big crack that comes down about four and a half, five foot. And every time the wind blew and the big limb went like that, it opened up about that far in the crotch. And like I say, it extends down the tree, the center of the tree, about four and a half, five foot. So, I'm concerned safety-wise. On my street there, the sidewalk is only on one side, and that's the side of my tree. And, you know, the kids ride their bikes and the cars. I put out some safety traffic cones, because I don't want anybody parking out there, because it's not a good deal. So, I was hoping that I could get somebody to take a look at it and possibly take it down before there is a accident. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Lindsay Olson, and I am the current president for the Board of Dakota TESOL. TESOL, T-E-S-O-L, stands for Teachers of English to Speakers of Other Languages. Dakota TESOL's mission is to provide professional development and networking opportunities for ESL and ELL professionals, so they, in turn, can better meet the needs of those they serve. Dakota TESOL is a joint organization between North and South Dakota, and therefore, we host a conference in South Dakota every other year in partnership with Lutheran Social Services. I want to extend an invite to each of you and the community to join us at our Building Bridges, Crossing Borders Conference next week on Monday, October 21st, and Tuesday, October 22nd, at Augustana University. With the increasing diversity in our school system and the workforce development initiatives currently being implemented throughout the community, this conference is timely and relevant to the conversation. People who attend the conference should include educators, counselors, social workers, human resource professionals, property management companies, government, and elected officials. Attendees will get to learn from keynote speakers such as Dr. Amir Ahmed, who will focus on how to address the challenges of a 21st century intercultural leadership with a commitment to social justice, as well as Wilson Kabayio, a recent Sioux Falls School District graduate, who will speak to how to draw the best out of every student beyond their English classes. Attendees will also have the opportunity to attend cultural panels and hear about trauma-informed practices from local experts. In addition to the conference sessions, we're going to be hosting two community nights, which will also be located at Augustana University, and they will run from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. The community nights will be open to the public and at no cost. The first community night is this Sunday, October 20th, and will feature Dr. Ahmed. The second community night is Monday, October 21st, and will feature a question-and-answer style session with a Sioux Falls School District ELL teacher and Congolese refugee Teresa Koshali and her son Gary, who recently graduated from Lincoln High School and works as a licensed professional counselor at Wellspring Therapy here in Sioux Falls. Again, the main conference dates are next week on Monday and Tuesday, and additional details, registration, and community night information can be found at our website, dakota tesol.org. Mayor, we look forward to seeing you on Monday for your opening remarks and hope the rest of you can make it to the conference or one of the community nights as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Good evening. How are you?
Hello. My name is J.J. Johnson. I was born and raised in Sioux Falls. In my teens and twenties, I had the opportunity to live in larger metropolitan areas before I eventually moved back to Sioux Falls about three years ago. I am also a local business owner, and I'm highly interested in building better communities and stronger ecosystems within Sioux Falls. Outside of operating my business, I try to volunteer as much as possible. I have two nonprofits that I work with, one that services women that have suffered mental, domestic abuse, and the other nonprofit that services the homeless community here in Sioux Falls. I'm here to talk about that particular nonprofit. Let me start by saying my experiences in living in larger cities like Houston, Texas, and Los Angeles, California. I have seen how homelessness can rapidly engulf communities and entirely change the dynamic of neighborhoods in which they encompass. When I moved back home, having to drive past the downtown area to get to my office, I realized our homeless community is still small and manageable. I then took it upon myself to assist the community in any way that I could. I've provided food, shelter, and sometimes even transportation out of Sioux Falls to these individuals that find themselves sleeping on the streets. I've learned a lot about addiction and trauma and how that plays out to why and how people sleep outside day in and day out. But my resources are becoming depleted. Every time I enter the downtown area in hopes of talking and learning from these people, I am bombarded with concerning information about the current homeless shelters, the food they provide, and also the safety of everyone involved. Although most nonprofits downtown intentions are good, I fear that these old systems are not working. I could go on and on about the ecosystems downtown, how the downtown business owners are being affected, how the small children that are living in these shelters are being affected, but I think that's all apparent. The reason why I'm here today is to first show my face and to let you know that I'm here to be an advocate, and I'm also here to assist the city and all of you in any way that I can. Secondly, I am here to be a reminder that as the temperature drops, there are going to be Sioux Falls residents that are still sleeping outside. To me, this is an emergency, and there's no quick solution to this. So, until we formalize a real plan that can invoke change, I believe it is my duty to keep the community informed about the people that are sleeping outside. And the way that I do that is posting on social media. So, I would ask all of you to please follow my nonprofit on Facebook, and it's entitled Katie's Open Door, and I will be keeping status updates on that. And thank you, guys, for your time. And remember, we are only as strong as our weakest link.
Thank you, J.J. Good evening.
I'm John Walker. I'm a sophomore at Augustana University. I'm a government major. I'm from Sioux Falls. I've been here my whole life. At Augustana, we've had a lot of interest in the B. Keeping Ordinance Amendment.
You know what, John? That's actually on our agenda later. So, you'll speak to that when that agenda comes, item comes up. So, that's all right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else for general public input tonight? All right. Seeing none, then we'll move on to the pulled item, which is item two from the contracts.
And that item, that item is from Parks and Recreation, project description, independent contractor agreement with Rock Garden Nursery LLC in the amount of $73,440.
Counsel Recky?
Just a couple of questions. Is there someone here that could maybe answer the questions? I'm just wondering, you know, we did, we had some interest on the council in this when it was happening. So, I just would like an update. If anybody could give me one as to, is this contract with the Rock Garden Nursery going to be working with the sculptor to, the artist, you know, to get this thing finished? Is that what it is, to the best of your knowledge, or is it anyone else in the staff?
Well, I don't believe anybody knew you were going to pull it, so no one came to speak to that item. So, we can get you answers on that, unless there's someone from Parks here, which I don't believe there is.
And if I may chime in, we didn't, usually, I know you like to have us do that on a Monday, but because of, yesterday was a holiday, I think things kind of got pushed behind. Is there, could we defer this?
We don't need to defer it. I'll just follow up and, you know, if, Mayor, if you could just have someone follow, just give me an update.
I sure can.
I'm guessing that's what it is, that this, this contract is with the ones who are going to provide the physical labor at the direction of the artist. But I just would like to know that for sure.
Correct. I will do that, Counsel Recky. Any other discussion on that item, then? All right. Then I look for a motion on it.
Move to approve Erickson.
Second, Starr.
All right. Motion approved by Erickson and seconded by Counselar Starr. Any further discussion? All right. We'll take a vote on that, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson.
All right. That passes seven to zero. Counsel Recky will get some follow-up to you on that. We'll move on to our next item, please.
Item 25, new 2019 retail liquor license for the Square on Main LLC, 200 South Phillips Avenue, Suite 200, CUP not required. Pending plan review, permit issuance, and final inspections for fire, health, and building services. Item 26, new 2019 retail Wine Insider license and new 2019 20 retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for Faux Tie LLC, 230 South Phillips Avenue, Suite 104, Full Service Restaurant, CUP not required. Pending final inspections for fire, health, and building services. Item 27, special one-day malt beverage license for S.D. Suds, Obscure Brewing Company, to be operated at Shop Dog Boutique, 5015 Southwestern Avenue, Suite 130, for Almost Home K-9 Rescue fundraiser on October 26, 2019. Item 28, special one-day malt beverage license for Home Builders Association of the Sioux Empire, 6904 South Linkcrest Place, for a membership social on November 1, 2019. Item 29, special one-day wine license for 605 Boxer Rescue, to be operated at the History Club, 758 South Phillips Avenue, for a fundraiser on November 2, 2019. Item 30, special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine license for Sioux Falls Public Schools Education Foundation, to be operated at Raven Industries, 205 E. 6th Street, for a fundraiser on November 7, 2019. And item 31, special one-day liquor license for the Class Project, to be operated at the Falls Overlook Cafe, 825 North Weber Avenue, for a wedding reception on October 19, 2019.
Good evening, Jamie.
Jamie Palmer with Licensing, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have on items 25 through 31.
All right. Thanks, Jamie. Anyone from the public here to speak to any of these items tonight? All right, counselors, do you have any questions for Jamie on any of these?
Move to approve Erickson.
Second, Sale.
All right. Motion approved by Counselar Erickson, seconded by Sale. Any discussion on those, counsel? Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Starr? I just, it, item 31 is interesting to me because that facility had a license, and now, if I'm correct, that license is being parked and not being used. And then, we're going back now and giving them a one-day license, and I'm assuming that that'll happen more and more in the future. So, not necessarily a question, but more of a statement that if we have a certain number of licenses in town and we don't use them, and then we go back and give the same person who sold the license a one-day permit, it just, I'm not sure that's how the system is supposed to work. I'm going to ask Jamie to speak to that item.
The Falls Overlook Cafe has only ever had a beer and wine license?
Didn't they have a liquor license at that facility? I thought that was the one that was sold to...
I think the one you're thinking of is on, I can't think of the, it was hooked onto a hotel.
This is, oh, Falls Overlook. I ranted for nothing. I apologize to everyone. Thank you. All right. We got a motion, a second. Any other discussion on these items? All right. We'll take a vote, then, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right. That passes seven to zero. We'll move on to item 32.
Item 32, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by revising Chapter 111, Restrictions on Issuance of Malt Beverage Retailer Licenses.
Good evening, ma'am.
Mayor, on August 20, 2019, we passed an ordinance, and the intent of that ordinance was to bring us into compliance with the state laws and policies governing the operation of video lottery in the city of Sioux Falls, to make us consistent with the policies of the state. And the purpose of that ordinance was to allow a door between two licensed establishments that's not accessible to the public for a, for a safety reason. The second intent was to allow alcohol to be stored in a single refrigerator that was, that was separated because of the two businesses by a perforated screen. And the third was to allow a common area between the two establishments, again, so that one employee could function safely within these operations. That was the intent of the ordinance, and when it came time to actually enforce it, there was some language that was in the proposed ordinance that, that was actually preventing it from being implemented in the way that we intended. And so, I challenged the staff that was involved in that interpretation to give me the language, changes that needed to be made in order to, to be able to enforce the original intent of the, of the proposal. And the language that you have before you is the language that they came up with. Basically, they really just asked us to remove the language and in the area where alcohol is not stored. That particular clause ended up causing problems from the enforcement perspective for the building code. And so, it's just a simple fix. I'm sorry we didn't get it right the first time, and I appreciate the patience of the, of the video lottery industry who's working with us on this as we work through it. But this change has come from staff, you know, from the city attorney's office, is the fix that we need to really allow us to enforce the original intent of the ordinance. And I'll take any questions.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Recky. Anyone from the public want to speak on this item tonight? All right, counselors, do you have any questions for Counsel Recky on this one? Counsel Staley?
This is our time for discuss, well, actually, I've got more statements.
Should we, should we move, let's put a motion on the floor, and then we'll move into that.
Move to approve Erickson.
Okay. Second, Selberg.
All right. Motion approved by Erickson and seconded by Counselar Selberg. Counsel Staley, go, go ahead.
Just so the public understands what's happening here. State law says you can only have 10 machines per business, 10 video lottery machines per business. Makes sense. But there is a way of, apparently, state law is also saying, but you can have, take your one building, chop it in half, and you can have, call each side of the building, a business. So, you can have 10 machines on this side, and you can have 10 machines on this side. I, I'm wondering if, could you have another, could you divide it into thirds and have, who was in charge of, who would know about, Jamie? Could we possibly divide a business into thirds and have 10 in each one of the thirds, Jamie? She's shaking her head yes. I don't want to give anybody ideas here, but one building, three parts.
Essentially, as far as a license, as long as they had three licenses and the space can be defined, a different legal description for each of those different spaces, then yes, they could have three different licenses.
Jamie, could we have one building with four walls, four different businesses? Yes, we could. I can see your head. Okay. So, here's the problem that I thought initially, because this, this came before our council, back with, when Mayor Huether was our mayor. It came up, and it got voted down. Four of us said no to this. I'll tell you, explain what we're doing here. Four said yes. Mayor Huether said no. And what, what we want to do here is, what's happening is because state law, we have this little wiggle room where you can have the wall in one building, we can have two businesses, so to speak. Okay, fine, two doorways going outside. But they want to have one employee. So, little Jane Doe, she goes from here, and she's, she's watching the other place with a TV screen, apparently. So, we got alcohol over here, video lottery, then we got another one here, and little Jane Doe, or Jimmy Doe, or whoever he is, he's going here, one employee going in and out. And he's, he's taking the money or whatever, he's doing his business by having to go outside. And of course, if, if we had three, three businesses within that area... businesses within that area, we would have, apparently, one employee could go hop from this business to that business to the next one. Maybe we could do it with four. I always thought to myself, it seems like a safety issue for that employee, one person to be monitoring a video lottery, two video lottery establishments, because, you know, sometimes people come in there with guns, we've heard about it. You're going to have one side with no one there, and the other side with one person. To me, it'd be safer to have one person in each establishment, maybe even more than that. But anyway, that's what this is about. So what happened, we voted it down, it came back again, because what they want to do is they want to have a passway through inside the building so that employee doesn't, that one lone employee monitoring endless numbers of video lottery machines doesn't have to walk outside, so they can pass through inside. Now, I understand that my colleagues are going to say, state law says we have to do this, but when you think about it, citizens, it really doesn't make any sense. So I voted against this before, I mean, the last two times it came up, I voted against it. I'm going to vote against it again because sometimes you just have to do the right thing, and state law, maybe state law needs to change.
Counsel Nitzer?
I'll make it real simple. State law and the administrative rules say they can do exactly all of what the counselor is talking about. If you want to change that, you can talk to the state. Our only choice is, are we going to make it safer for people to be able to do what state law allows, or are we going to put up in ped minutes that's going to make them have to go outside? Voting against this makes it less safe. Voting this down doesn't do anything to address all of those issues that are talked about. Anybody has a problem with it, we need to talk to the state. They control video lottery, and that's where it has to change.
Counsel Brackey.
I'm just going to read the South Dakota Supreme Court case that governs the situation. With all respect to my fellow counsel member, I do think that this is an area where we need to follow the Supreme Court because they've made it clear. Justice Conancamp said that the court concluded that South Dakota's constitutional and statutory scheme indicated that the state intended to fully occupy the field of video lottery to the exclusion of municipal regulation, we affirm. So, you know, as uncomfortable as it may make, you know, some of my fellow counsel members, I embarked on this amendment because I believe that the South Dakota Supreme Court has made it crystal clear that the constitutional authority that is given the state Video Lottery Commission is equal to the constitutional authority that we are given in our Home Rule Charter, and that they have preempted the field, and thus, you know, we really have to defer to the state on this issue.
Counsel Staley?
Counsel Brackey, did I hear you use the word scheme in that paragraph you just read? Did I hear that word right? Did you say scheme?
Statutory scheme.
Statutory scheme. Let me say this, two, three, four video lottery businesses serviced by one employee is a safety issue. And Counsel Nitzer just said that we have nothing to do with it, we can't do anything about it. What I say is, let's ask the business owner to hire somebody for each one of his establishments. You got 10, state law says 10 video lottery machines as a business, hire a person for the business. I don't think it's legal for us to let a business, a bar owner, have two separate bars under one roof and pass through. We can't do that if it's just a bar, but for some reason, when the video lottery element comes in, all sorts of things can be happening that don't make any sense. So, once again, let's keep people safe. To keep people safe, let's have enough staff in each establishment to mine the lottery machines that the state has said, make up a business. That's 10.
Any other discussion on this item, counsel? All right, seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote, please.
Counsel members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
No.
Brackey?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to one. We're on to item 33, please.
Item 33, first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at the northwest corner of West 34th Street North and North Career Avenue from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban and O Office Districts, the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban, RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban, RA2 Apartment Residential, moderate density, RA3 Apartment Residential, high density, O Office and CN Conservation Districts, number 10951-2019, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval, four to zero. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 5, 2019.
Good evening, Jason.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application, and the owner is Mike Crane with Lloyd Companies. It's located at the northwest corner of West 34th Street and North Career Avenue. It's about 23.5 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing the apartment complex in kind of the northeast portion of this development, and then future single and twin homes in the kind of the southern portion adjacent to 34th Street. The applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting, which staff attended. The residents' major concerns out of that meeting was drainage of this area, specifically the existing drainage pond and detention area that's owned by the city to the west. Just to give you a little bit here, the applicant's drainage plan, their preliminary plan, is to have kind of a detention pond area in the center of this, and actually to take about five acres of developable property. So currently, there isn't any CN property, and they're actually rezoning some of the twin home and duplex area at 2 CN, so they're actually reducing the developable acres down by five acres. Then, as I indicated before, their other main concerns was this existing city-owned drainage and the parkland that's directly to the west. So you can see, it's a very large drainage area. We did have Drainage Engineering and Stormwater go out there and kind of do an assessment of it to make sure that it was functioning properly. I know there's been quite a bit of water going through that. They did do an onsite inspection of it and indicated that it is functioning properly to what it's supposed to do. It's supposed to carry a ton of water through there. We do have Andy Berg from Drainage Engineering here if there's any other technical questions from him, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, so.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item tonight? Come forward, please. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is David Watson. I live at 3108 North Galaxy Lane. Okay. Everything's already been said and done about Lloyd, Lloyd Companies, you know, they've done really good work with the adding six acres, the drain ponds getting bigger and bigger that, you know, they're working on. That's not my issue. Okay, I want to focus this three minutes strictly on the need for mucking this drain, drainage area from above Benson all the way down to Maple where the new middle school is over there. Okay, this map is completely inaccurate and several years old, where it relates to what the actual state of the drainage ditch is now. There are several trees, there's debris, there's makeshift beaver dams from several years of high water. When I first moved here four years ago, that place was dry as bone back there. Great, no mosquitoes. Now mosquitoes are back there enforced because it's wet year-round. Heck, there's four-foot of water behind my house right now that's been there for three weeks and hasn't moved, Mr. Mayor. It's a little excessive. Now, right there at 34th where it stops at Galaxy, then you see the city's property, and then it continues onto the finished property on 34th. Okay, there is a, would have been told as a washout. It's not a washout. It's a storm, there's an actual pipe underneath the ground there where the dirt's been pushed over it, so it's an access way across there. If you could use the cursor to show this area right here, sir. So, right there, no, that is a pipe underneath where the drainage way is. Go back to the left about four inches on your screen, a little bit more, a little more, right there. That's an actual pipe under the ground there, and there's dirt pushed over the top of it. It's not a washout. It's plugged from both ends, and it's too dangerous for me to get in there and get it out. Otherwise, I would. I'd just go clear. Tired of arguing about it. You can't get in there, there's too much water, so all the water backs up, pushes the water all the way up, so you can't drain from, on the west side of Galaxy, you can't drain. All the water down there comes and starts backing up in the field because it can't go in because it's blocked there. Four-foot dam in effect. City says it's not a problem. They out there walked it. Oh, yeah, it's a washout. No, it's not. There's a pipe on the ground. It's all blocked. As you come down 34th and you round the corner towards Marion, there are several large, which appear to be willow trees that are growing through the city's drainage property. They're making beaver dams because the roots in the trees are broken, the logs will land across, the breeze gets into it, creates a beaver dam, for lack of a better term. City's not interested in going out there and cleaning that out, so far as we've been told. We get around further into Maple, the other one's created, there's fencing for cattle across there, barbed wire fencing crossing the city's drainage way. Great, there's more things that create beaver dams, which has all been blocked up. So as it's high like it is now, water flows, you can't see nothing going on underneath, but there's a lot of underneath. So if the city, I know they're going to, you guys are going to approve the Lloyd Company contract, that makes perfect sense, too. I mean, they're doing everything they can to kind of mitigate with the zero rise, zero fill.
Thank you, David.
We're just asking to muck it.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak on this item tonight? Good evening.
Hello, my name is Robert Delhante. I live at 3104 North Galaxy Lane. I think we have some slides also, because this actually addresses, these are all pictures taken of the area behind us. One thing that I'd like to see is I'd like to see the city put a berm back behind me. Back in 2009 and 2010, there was some talk about it. I think it's needed with this going forward. If you take a look at these pictures, you can see the amount of water back there. And like that particular picture there, that's after 1.1 inches of rain. That was in September. We have a problem back there. I hear what the city has to say about it. I disagree with what the city has to say about it. At the zoning commission meeting, Andy actually turned around and said he doesn't know when the last study, water study was done in the area. He'd have to look it up. Don't quite see how you give your approval to something if you don't know what it is, and we seem to have some issues with that. I think if we had a berm going from 34th Street all the way down to the cul-de-sac, that would make it so that the residents along that area won't have to worry, because when you take a look at some of these pictures, the water is up to the fence line. I know it's approached the fence line of mine also. It's something that we're definitely worried about. Lloyd Companies has done quite a bit on it. They've made concessions, which is great. Would have they made those concessions if we hadn't raised an objection to this project? Probably not, but I believe even Lloyd Companies can see that there's a problem back there. I don't see why the city, for some reason, doesn't seem to see the problem. I think that what we really need to do, like I said, is have a berm back there, and that would at least give the residents something to protect ourselves, and I think the project should be put on hold until then. And I think there's some more pictures there, too. I just got something from the director, let's see, Mark Macy. He's a state NFIP coordinator, South Dakota Office of Emergency Management today. He sent me a map, this one, which I had never seen prior today, asking if any of this project was going to be in the shaded zone. Well, yes, it is. And he responded back to me today, "Thanks, Robert. I can definitely send Andy Berg a message about the permitting requirements for a project in an AE zone." The map has a base elevation listed at 1455 for that area. And he's asking if I have pictures. Well, yes, I have pictures.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this topic tonight? All right, counselors, do you have, come forward, go ahead. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Mike Crane from Lloyd Companies, 101 South Reed Street. Just a couple of comments. I would like to, we've been working on this now for several months, and I think it's important to realize that this is a work in progress. We're continuing to refine our drainage issues so that we're, we are not part of the problem as best we can do that. We're working with city staff, our engineers, and certainly will continue that so that we have a plan that is one that's not going to add to any issues that are out there. The other thing I think to remember is, this is a long-term project. It's not going to happen immediately. It'll take a period of probably three to five years to complete, to build out as we go forward, and we'll continue to be involved in making, you know, making adjustments. My engineer and I were talking this afternoon, and he was saying there are still some things we could conceivably do with the drainage area that we're going to have on site to hold even more water. So this, we understand the concerns of the neighborhood. We want to be good neighbors. We want to make a positive contribution to the area, and I think the, I would urge you to set the date of hearing and ultimately support the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? All right, counselors, do you have any questions for our staff on this one? Counsel Nitzer?
I've spent already quite a bit of time on this because I've been contacted. It's really technical, so I have a number of things. And could you go back to, maybe the citizen submitted it, the special flood hazard area mapping shows a floodway, came from FEMA. I was actually looking at this yesterday, and so that keys off some, okay, so I was looking at this, and I'm guessing it's going to end up being Andy Berg or maybe the engineer for Lloyd, who I see. I was looking at this, and you have the, this is a floodway here. I think it's called like Willow Creek, if I remember right. And then, actually, interestingly, the floodway actually runs over some of these houses, but they were mapped out with a Loma F letter, which is a letter of map revision for fill. Essentially, they must, the developer must have built or put, fill on the land, lifted it up, and so they're technically out for flood insurance purposes, but, you know, they're essentially in the floodway and their backyard has floodway running right up to it. So, my question is, with this being marked a floodway, what would you expect to see back there in rain events? Like what? Because I'm struggling with, I see these pictures, and then I see this, and I go, is that what is supposed to be happening? Is it too much?
Andy Berg, Public Works. The floodway is the area that's basically designated for no development, so that is a higher protection level than the floodplain is. The floodway in a 100-year event, that would be the boundary of where that water would spread to if the floodplain were filled in. So if the floodplain is filled in, that floodway was protected, so the 100-year would stay within that. The floodplain is where the 100-year would go with no fill placed into that area. So that's, during a 100-year event, that shaded area would be where the water, you'd see the water, except where, as you noted, there's fill been placed for homes along that Galaxy Lane area.
And since you have, I talked to the citizen about the berm idea, but then I was looking at the map. Since you have floodway here, and then the 100-year goes over to the west, I would guess if we wanted to do like a berming along there, it's going to run, they're going to say that you've got to show no rise, and it's going to, they're going to have major problems putting in berms inside of that area, or am I wrong? Could that be done? Could they do the berm? I like the idea in theory. I just don't know whether it would work.
Anything can be done if the modeling shows that you don't cause that no rise, but yes, it would be, it would be a challenge to add additional fill along there in the form of a berm. You know, the footprint of that can get fairly wide if you're going up.
Yeah.
Five feet. It's probably 20 feet wide, something like that. But, you know, there's nothing that says it can't be done. It just would take engineering and modeling to show that it could be done without pushing that boundary further onto somebody else's property or causing damage upstream or downstream. That's what all engineers are tasked with when they deal with the floodplain and floodway areas.
And FEMA would have to certify that, then?
Yes, FEMA would have to be, it would have to be submitted for approval through them.
To the citizen's question about, there was multiple things. This pipe that was maybe apparently plugged, or what this pipe is?
The pipe is in an area, the low area of 34th Street North, and to... And to, to the, the barbed wire fence, to the trees, to all those types of issues, there are certainly things that over time we take out of most all of our drainage properties. It's an ongoing, never-ending thing. Volunteer trees will grow overnight, it seems, in drainage ways. So we're constantly going out and removing those, but we do prioritize areas where there is a problem, a real immediate problem that's affecting private property, structures, that type of thing. This area, as I mentioned at the planning commission, there's, there's no identified flooding of private property, structures. Certainly, we don't want it to get to that point. We are out, right now, our crews are out cutting trees out of drainage ways, but there's 250 drainage properties around town, we are actively in those. And this is an area, this is probably the biggest drainage channel we have in town. It's very large. And so there are a lot of volunteer trees that grow up in those areas. And it is the intention to get out and get those trees. The barbed wire fence, I'm not aware of any problems that it's caused, but certainly it will be removed at some point as well. The trees are usually our primary concern because as they did say, beavers can come into those areas and create dams, and then we have to go out and tear those out. So we watch for that.
In plain English, are you saying what's there you don't think is causing a material change in the functioning of this drainage way yet? It's not there yet?
Any trees will cause some change, but the, the size of this channel, the water elevations we've seen have not gotten to an elevation of concern for us in relation to other channels that are a higher priority. There are channels, there are already out of the city property, onto private property, affecting structures, eroding banks, those kind of things. So certainly, this area needs some attention, tree removal, that type of thing. There's always mucking that can be done, but it's not at a level where we're seeing negative impacts to private property.
Okay, I'm gonna defer, because I have more.
Counselor Staley?
So, so Andy, I mean, I'm seeing these pictures. Apparently, the water's already coming up close to their property. So you're assuring us that any, anything that, that Lloyd Company is gonna be doing is not gonna add to that problem? Is that? Because what, what I'm hearing, what I've heard in the, excuse me, in the past, is that what, what we, he, Lance Weatherly, Weatherby, what, what we're doing is when we do these, these, pass these things through, we're saying to the homeowner, or whoever, whoever is affected, you will not be more impacted after we pass something. We're guaranteeing them, they will not be hurt.
Well, there is no guarantee when it comes to rain events. What we're guaranteeing is that we've required the developer and his engineer to meet our engineering design standards, which say that during a five and 100-year storm event, the runoff rates coming off of their development will not exceed the single-family runoff rate of an equivalent size. And they put detention ponds on their property to regulate that discharge of water back into the drainage way at that same rate. It used to be anything five acre, up to five acres could discharge with no detention. We've actually, in the last couple of years, reduced that so that anything greater than an acre has to detain to a higher level. So we feel we are requiring a higher level than we would have in the past.
And what I've, when I've talked with these residents, that they're concerned is the city's drainage isn't functioning the way it's supposed to be. And that's what, what we're hearing about these beaver dams and trees and fences. So what I'm wondering is what kind of an assurance can we give these people before we approve this? That, I mean, it sounds like, there's a question whether it's the Lloyd's problem or it's, it's the city's problem. But what, what can we build into this that you will assure them you will do? Because it sounds like this could be a very problematic. If we don't get this fixed and we add, add to it, they could be in jeopardy. So when you say, you kind of inferred, well, yeah, this is a priority, but we have other things that are maybe more of a priority. I'd say as, as citizens and taxpayers, they, they would have a right to have you go in and, and dredge this out, take those fences down. The guy even said he was gonna do it himself, but he can't really get down there. A citizen shouldn't have to be maintaining our city property.
I agree. We, I'm willing, myself and our collections, Water Brick Collections Supervisor, meet with folks all the time with having discussions like this. Anybody who wants to call Public Works, 8367-8601, and speak to me about this, I'd be happy to meet them. I go out on site all the time and talk about these type of things, happy to meet with them and talk specifics about a location, if it needs mucking or not. I can't commit to mucking this in a very near timeframe because we have higher priorities around town where there may already be homes being flooded, that type of thing, that we have to address, or a bank is eroded, or something to that effect. We're, we prioritize these every year based on the changing conditions that occur because a heavy rain event can change the way a channel's flowing because of erosion or something to that effect. So we're constantly prioritizing these channels. I'm confident that Lloyd Companies engineer is designing this site to meet our design standards. And myself and our collection supervisor, we'd be happy to meet with folks onsite and talk about this, talk about their concerns onsite, it's much easier to talk about it. I don't want anything failing, I don't want it to get it to a point where there's a problem. But when our crews are looking at these sites, that, those pictures of that water out there, it's in the city drainage area. It's, it's passing the water, it's a lot of water, I don't disagree with that. But we, we haven't had the problems out here like we've had in other parts.
But is there a chance this Lloyd property project is gonna add to that water?
Their design standards are, if they meet the design standards, which they'll be held to by our engineering staff, it will be runoff from that site at a single-family runoff rate, which is the acceptable standard for that.
It's going, it's gonna be going, it's gonna be joining this, our, this runoff area that's already there?
Yes.
See, that's, that's where the problem is. I, I think if we're, we're, because in, the difference between this and your other areas you're dealing with is that we are gonna be passing legislation to change something. So we're being asked now to consider adding something to a situation that seems somewhat problematic. So again, I would feel better knowing before, you know, I, I would hope that you would have been onsite with these people before we came to this point. But I would say to you, Andy, why don't you get onsite before the second reading, and then let's get something formalized so that, because I don't think they're opposed to the Lloyd Company. They're not opposed to the development, but they just, they're opposed to having some kind of flooding peril coming upon them.
Counselor Erickson, I'm gonna let you jump in here.
Thank you very much. I can certainly empathize with the water issues. I own a home that backs up to a drainage way as well, and it can be scary when there's a lot of rain that happens. And so I certainly understand your concerns about the water. Nothing stinks more than, than that happening through your home and encroaching on your property. I would encourage us to, to make a proactive approach. I do understand that there's priorities in that dredging it or mucking it, or whatever you want to call it, will need to be happen, will need to happen at some point. But just maybe communicating with those homeowners, letting them know about the timeline of that will happen. Jason, if you can pull up that other map for me that goes side by side to show that one, thank you. This, this map spoke volumes to me. The, the fact that a developer is willing to add in that much conservation and an additional pond, holding pond, to ensure that that is not going to runoff into those homes is huge. That's, I mean, they're losing five acres of developable land. That is a lot to the bottom line. That does a lot when we talk about cap rates and return on investment, like we were earlier today at our informational meeting. That five acres is going to really cut into that, but it's the right thing to do. And they noticed that it's the right thing to do, and that that will hopefully get rid of some of the water issues and getting that back there. I'm excited for this development, this part of the city needs to see more development, a little faster. So I'm excited to see that come to fruition, and thank you for your investment in that. I, I do have a couple of questions, if I can, about the Loma letter. Which of those homes on Galaxy were able to get that Loma letter? And then is that something that is the developers? That they chose to do that when they built the home? Or is it homeowner Christine wants to build a home there, and that's my option to do that? Who decides how to do that? Because I also have a property on a floodway, and it, it's scary sometimes, too. But we built it to the floodplain standards to ensure that we don't, don't flood, and had to bring in a ton of fill dirt, too. So of those homes that kind of have that teal shade, were all of those granted that Loma letter, or how does that work?
I can't say which addresses off the top of my head, but that is a developer-driven thing. When they come in and they lay those lots over those areas.
So if it's, say, it's a spec home, and then I just come in and buy it, it's?
Yeah, when, when they lay out the lots, if they're planning to fill them in, they start that process right away with FEMA to get those lots approved at that higher elevation in the floodplain. So the, the developer does that, the city just, our floodplain coordinator, Albert, he is the one who's just confirming that that's occurred.
Occurred, okay. Because that's, I mean, that's a person's choice. I chose to do it myself as well, and it's their choice to do that. But when you build that close to that floodway, it's, it's close. And, you know, I, the water is close to those homes, but if it's staying in the city way, then it's doing what it's supposed to do. So my, my hope is, is that where it's coming, where it's not completely flowing through on that 34th Street, I believe the gentleman was talking about, making sure that's not blocked so the water can flow through freely is certainly important. But would be excited to see what can happen in the next couple of weeks. I know the, the next reading would be, second reading is November 5th, so we've got a little bit of time. But if we can come up with, hey, here's our, our plan and the priority list, it looks like it's gonna be in 2021 when this is gonna be mucked out. And if something changes, you know, you move up compared to other people. I don't know if that's an option as well, but I know you keep priorities with it. So, thank you.
Counselor Neitzler?
Yeah, and of interest, so the Loma letter gets you out of having to get flood insurance if you have a federally backed mortgage, but they still highly recommend that you, you know, they can't make you, but they will tell you that you should get it. Cause I mean, obviously, if you have a Loma letter, it means you're right, right up next to something like this. But that's everybody's decision. But that's where it's difficult, because when you look at the floodway, the water during the rain events is designed to go right there. So when you see these large rains right up on somebody's backyard, as scary as it is, that's apparent, I mean, that's the, the design, and I'm not, I'm not minimizing that, but I, I do agree with Counselor Erickson. Anything that you can just take a look at again, if you could, you know, every little bit would help in a situation like this where you have this much concern?
Certainly. You know, the one thing I'll, I'll say about the, the shaded areas, I think Albert maybe mentioned it last time at planning commission, but those are approximate. When a developer does their plans, they survey the area and utilize the actual elevations. And on their plan sheet, one of the exhibits actually shows a blue squiggly line kind of in that CN area. That's an accurate depiction of the actual boundary of the, the floodplain map, that blue squiggly line there. So the FEMA maps are an approximation to give you an idea where things are at. And then the engineers are, and surveyors go out and plot that out.
And you jumped right to my next thing that I was gonna bring up is, so I was asking about how this works, and my understanding was that they're using like LiDAR data, which is, you know, like flyovers and, and that stuff to, basically to approximate elevations. But then it's when the surveyor, like Norman Engineering, just went out and in between, you know, somewhere between the first one at the planning commission and the second one, they went out and they did it. And when they do the actual elevations, that conservation area that they added, I believe, is where they found that it's actually below the 100-year. So they wouldn't want it developed in there anyway, because it's a pain, because you'd have to get no rise certificates and go through all that mess. So, so it's just, that's just another thing where, because that was, I think, a misunderstanding that I and others had, which was that Lloyd came forward the first time and they quote-unquote "didn't appreciate the problem." And then that's why they added more, but it was because they got some actual survey data that showed them, yes, this area is really not developable anyway. And I believe they're putting the detention pond in that extra area.
The detention pond is outside of the floodplain. The, the blue line comes just on the north side of?
Yeah, okay.
So we, we don't have ponds in the floodplain.
Okay.
Those out. So that's outside of the, the 100-year.
Yeah, and interesting, interestingly, looking at the map, I, I guess I hadn't even made the connection that it's actually, obviously, they would still have to meet standards, but this is kind of a, you know, when you look at it overall, it's a, a down zone, which is, which is interesting.
Counselor Sale, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, a couple of comments and maybe a question. And as we look forward, as, as the council goes forward and we start their budgeting process right away in the spring, and we continue to talk about drainage. And I would say that this is an area that we need to spend some money on next year to add to our team that deals with drainage all the time. As they prioritize what they do, they're gonna have to take care of those people that are already flooded. And the potentials for rains that we've had in these past few years have shown me that it's not gonna quit. One in a 100-year flood, we have them every other week now in Sioux Falls. So I would suggest, as councilors, we all remember that when it comes to budget and encourage our people to do that. The question I have on this is a five-acre pond inside the city of Sioux Falls, are we gonna be able to fish there? Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Counselor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, lots of good feedback from the councilors so far, and obviously, we all do sympathize with the neighborhood and certainly valid concerns. I think some of the things I've taken out of the conversation tonight, this is a marathon and not a sprint. It will be three to five years on this, on this build-out, and the adjustments will continue to be made. And from what I'm hearing, I know we've seen Lloyd has been making some concessions already, and will be, have shown they're willing to work with the neighborhood and will continue to do so. And if I'm hearing Mr. Berg correctly, the city is going to be addressing a lot of the issues we're talking about tonight over that time period as well. So attention's being paid to the citizens' concerns, it's gonna take a while to, again, the marathon, three to five years thing tells me we're hearing this, we're working on this. And I'm just going to obviously follow up and see how we're doing as this goes along, but have confidence that we will continue to hear what they're saying and address the concerns and adjust this as we go, so I will be in support. Thank you.
Counselor Neitzler?
Last two, just reflecting questions that citizens asked me, which were very good questions. Number one, this business about a water study, who, who would be, are we talking about you looking at like the watershed? What water study are we talking about? And, and how does that affect any of these projections?
I was asked when the last drainage study was done of this watershed area, and I wasn't aware of the date. DGR was the last to study this area in, I believe it was 2005-ish. And it was an analysis of this, the entire watershed coming down through this area. So it's been studied. We studied, we have areas of town that have been studied numerous times, and that's based on when an area isn't meeting standards. This area is, we have not done a follow-up drainage study of this area because it's meeting standards. It is conveying the development flows as the development occurs around this watershed in that area. And part of that is because of the engineering standards requiring those ponds to occur in those developments before it drains to this watershed channel. So the drainage analysis has been done in the past. We certainly can study this area again, but we, we have to warrant that based on needs for an additional drainage analysis.
Last question, there's a lot of concern that what we've seen in the last couple of years is quote-unquote "the new normal." Now, of course, it's gonna take probably many years before we know whether it is. Have we changed any standards that address that? What do you have to, because, you know, we design to this quote-unquote 100-year event, and when we're getting these multiple 100-year events, the concern is that, for whatever reason, maybe we may need to be designing to a higher standard?
Well, I certainly hope it's not the new normal for the drainage team's sake, but no, we've looked at the drainage analysis, the, nationally, the Weather Service, NOAA has done some additional analysis nationwide of hydrology, of what, what is a 1% chance event or what was the 100-year event. And they've, they've created new maps, and some areas did change quite a bit. But when you go right to the Sioux Falls area, our engineering design standard, roughly six inches in a 24-hour period for a 100-year storm event, hits right on what that new analysis, or that updated analysis says. So we feel our current standards for what is a 1% chance event still apply. So we have not changed that. I did reference earlier, though, that we have increased or lowered I did reference earlier, though, that we have increased or lowered the threshold for detention standards, and lower, I mean, made it more restrictive. And so we've done that on our own just because we feel it needs it. It needs it to better serve the community. So that's, we have taken that measure.
Thank you.
Counselors, anyone want to make a motion on this item? Looking for a motion to set a date, a second reading for Tuesday, November 5th?
So moved, Erickson.
Second.
Second on that? Second by Counselor Neitzert. Discussion amongst the council on this one? Then let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. We're on item 34, please.
Item 34, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 214 West Russell Street from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District, number 11059-2019, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 5th, 2019.
The applicant here is Stephanie Wolman. The owner is One Thing Trust. This is located just east of the come-and-go at 20, or excuse me, Minnesota and Russell Street. It's about .14 acres. Purpose is to match the current use of a duplex on the property with the correct zoning.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Counselors, do you have any questions for Jason on this one?
Move to set the second reading for Tuesday, November 5th.
Second, Selberg. All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Selberg on that. Any discussion, counsel? Let's take a vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item.
Item 35, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at the southeast corner of East Arrowhead Parkway and South Riverview Avenue from the AG Agriculture Industrial District to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District, number 11044-2019, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 5th, 2019.
The applicant and owner here are Brian and Pamela Hedman. This is located at the southeast corner of Arrowhead Parkway and South Riverview Avenue, way on the east side of Sioux Falls, just southeast of the Arboretum. It's about 60 acres in size. This specific property, remember, we annexed in, I think, two months ago, included this parcel, also our Arrowhead Parkway and the Arboretum property. The applicant is looking at zoning this to commercial, and they're looking at constructing an event barn on the property. They did have a neighborhood meeting, and also at the Planning Commission, we received several concerns from the neighbors, specifically in the rural subdivisions to the south and southwest. Their main concerns had to do with traffic and some safety concerns with Highway 42. This particular applicant will need to pave this section of Riverview Avenue from Highway 42 all the way down to their access point, and then everything else south of this will still be in the county and will be gravel. Shannon Austin has come along with us to the meeting tonight, and she's going to give you a little bit of information on current trips along 42, some crash data, and then a quick update on the CIP for Highway 42 when it's going to be expanded.
All right, thanks, Jason.
Hi, Shannon.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Shannon Austin, Public Works Engineering. As Jason said, we have a lot of stuff going on out here in the Highway 42 and Riverview area. We have currently, right now, on Arrowhead Parkway, we have about 7,000 vehicles per day. That is pretty normal for this side of the city. As you get closer to the city, and I'll use for an example, from Six Mile Road over to Veterans Parkway, that traffic count jumps up to about 10,000 to 12,000. So as you continue to go to the east out to Iowa, those traffic volumes do drop off. On Riverview Avenue, pretty typical for a gravel road, we counted it just last week. We typically count these gravel roads around the city of Sioux Falls once every five years for the formation of our traffic model. We had counted last week, and it was about 125 vehicles. So that's pretty normal, I guess, for a gravel road around the city of Sioux Falls. For example, I will compare it to Six Mile Road, which is to the east of here, from 41st Street to 57th Street, which is also a gravel road that carries about 100 vehicles per day. So, you know, it's pretty typical for our volumes for those gravel roads. As Jason said, we do have some exciting things coming out on Arrowhead Parkway. We are working with the Department of Transportation right now on plans for reconstruction and widening from Willow Run Golf Course all the way out to the Iowa border. We'll be constructing Arrowhead Parkway in three different phases. And so this particular phase runs from 26th Street to the river. This unfortunately is the last phase, which is planned for 2023. From the section from the Big Sioux River all the way out to Iowa is planned for 2022. And then as we get closer to Sioux Falls, from Veterans Parkway to 26th Street, those, that portion is planned for 2021 and 2022. So lots of projects going on on Arrowhead Parkway to meet those future demands. Our future traffic volumes on Arrowhead Parkway, typically, we look out a 20-year planning horizon. In 20 years, we anticipate Arrowhead Parkway to be around that 10,000 to 12,000 vehicles per day. And Arrowhead Parkway in our 20-year planning, or excuse me, Riverview Avenue in that 20-year planning horizon is planned to be paved all the way down to 41st Street, and then 41st Street is planned to be paved from Riverview to connect over to the existing paved section at Six Mile Road. So that's looking long-term. We will certainly see improvements on Riverview and on Arrowhead Parkway. Currently, right now, Arrowhead Parkway is still the Department of Transportation's jurisdiction. Typically, what happens is when they reconstruct and widen, then they turn that jurisdiction over to the city of Sioux Falls. So even though we have annexed the right-of-way, it is still currently their jurisdiction to put up signs, to put up signals, and that it's their responsibility to monitor the traffic along Arrowhead Parkway. Looking at crashes, we typically look at crashes the last three years. We averaged in the last three years about two crashes per year. Again, pretty normal. Those crashes mainly contain vehicles that are running off of the road, and about 30% of those are impacted by the weather, which is pretty common. And then also speed. Those are two factors that are brought up in the crash information, speed and traffic. As you come around those corners up by the Arboretum, certainly, people lose control and then slide off the road. We looked back at crashes in the last 16 years, and our average crashes per year was about 1.8. So it's staying pretty consistent of about 1.8 to two crashes per year. Our speed limit out here right now is 55 miles per hour. It does start to trend down once you get closer to the city. But this, of course, it doesn't the 65 miles per hour, which is typical on a state highway, which is what it is currently to the east. So after construction and widening of Arrowhead Parkway, which is planned to be a four-lane with a median, we will work with the DOT on what we are going to set the speed limit at. Typically, we're not going to probably go lower than 45 or 50, just because it is an arterial with limited access. So that's about all I have. If you have any questions, we'd be certainly happy to answer them. Otherwise, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Shannon. Anyone from the public here to speak on this topic tonight? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm David Zokitis, and I've noticed on the previous map that this area is pretty close to the river. It'd be really nice to see where it sits in relationship to the floodplain and the floodway because they make problems if you don't watch out for them.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this topic tonight? All right, counselors, do you have questions for Shannon or Jason on this? Counselor Sale, and then I'll go to Counselor Neitzert.
Yeah, Shannon, you gave a great presentation, and I kind of missed one. You talked about 41st Street being paved and coming down Riverview.
Yes.
And I, when did you say that was going to be?
That would happen in the next 20 years.
In the next 20 years?
Yeah.
And the state would do that?
No, that actually on 41st Street would be the city of Sioux Falls because ultimately, that section is in our current growth area, and it's not tier-two or tier-three growth area. So in 20 years, we would have grown out to encompass the entire 41st Street and Riverview Avenue. It's quite a, quite a...
It's quite the, quite the hilly road.
Yes, it is. It will definitely be a challenge for us to design it and build it.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Counselor Neitzert. I do have a question for Shannon, but to answer David's question, I think if you look at the map where it says Zone AE, that would be the floodplain, and the X is outside. So uncontrolled left turns, how much do you see of issues? Because that was one of the major concerns that I've heard from neighbors, was that on Riverview, you're making a left turn without a signal onto the highway. Was there crash data to bear that out? And then just from your own just experience, how much do we have of uncontrolled left turns, and how do those work out? Because it seems like it could be dangerous if people are going really fast and you're making a left.
Absolutely. And so certainly, you have to look at the characteristics of Arrowhead Parkway. Arrowhead Parkway right now, your peak hours are anywhere from that 6:30 to probably 7:30 or 8 o'clock in the morning, and then at night, it's anywhere from 4:30 to that 6 o'clock at night. And so what we see is that when we did our volume counts and our intersection analysis, we have about 12 to 15 cars making the turns to go out onto Arrowhead Parkway. And so with the number of cars on Arrowhead Parkway, there's a lot of gaps because there is gaps with stop signs that those turning movements can be made safely onto Arrowhead Parkway. Now, absolutely guarantee you that when the wedding barn has events, which are probably going to be most likely off-peak hours, you will see more traffic. In case you didn't realize, there's Paternal Order of Police that's right on the north side. They have events similar to the wedding barn also on the weekends. And when it gets, when people start, when you're traveling on Arrowhead Parkway and you actually see more turning vehicles, you do slow down because you see that there's more activity coming, you know, coming up on you. So certainly understand the need for a left turn if there were, if there were more trips associated with the wedding barn. There's 100, 100 or so parking stalls. The information that we received, there just isn't enough trips to warrant that left turn. But if they would have been higher, we would have required the applicant to actually reconstruct and add a left turn lane on Arrowhead Parkway. And with the project coming up, it would just seem better to just wait for the project.
Yeah, and as I thought about it, it's not necessarily true that everybody just funnels out at the same time from a wedding. People just kind of, it's kind of an attrition thing. Over the night, people are just kind of had, you know, so it's not necessarily 100 cars lined up at one time.
And actually, if you're familiar with the area, out across to the east side of the river, there's also another wedding event barn to the south of Arrowhead Parkway or Highway 42. I think it's called the Riviera. Is that what it's called? But there, so there's, this will be the third wedding event barn in the area.
Other questions for Shannon or Jason on this, counselors? I'd look for a mo...
Oh, Counselor Starr, go ahead. Shannon, I guess what I'm struggling with the most here is I really think we're moving, if we rezoned, we're ahead of the game a little bit, that, yeah, eventually, this might be an appropriate place for this, but do you see that the improvements that are going to be made in the traffic five years from now are going to make this a much more safer area for people to use this type of facility? Because again, some of the concern, too, is that you're going to a township road that, yeah, we're making them pave it to their access point, but if people continue to go south to get away from traffic and try to go along, I just, it just feels like we're outkicking our coverage, that maybe we're ahead of the game a little bit, that, yeah, it's still an appropriate use for an ag piece of property. But, boy, if the wedding barn thing doesn't work out, because that's, there's no guarantees that that'll be there, and then we change this to a C2, you know, there's all kinds of other things that could be there, whether it's a gas station or a retail or some of those things. And those add a whole nother level of concern when it comes to traffic. I mean, we, we don't know for sure that it's going to be a wedding barn when we make the zoning change.
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll let Jason answer that. I mean, we just look at the traffic on what's proposed. And so we've, as you all know, that we've had numerous wedding barns come across this board. I mean, I think this is the third one. There was one on Maple Street on the west side of town. We don't know that that's going to be a wedding barn, so, but certainly let Jason answer that question. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Great question. Yeah, we don't know for sure if this, I mean, the applicant is proposing a wedding barn. If it is zoned C2, obviously, they can do anything within the C2 zoning district. I believe then if they would change it to a gas station or something, we would start looking at the trips for that, and then that may warrant a left turn lane. I think one thing with this one that we maybe need to look at is, is a lot of these wedding barns, the ones that specifically Shannon had talked about, the one over on West Maple, and then we did do that one off of North Cliff, a lot of those ones, they did in the county, and they actually were taking all their traffic on gravel county roads. So I think the applicant's kind of done everything we asked them to. We asked them to annex in, we asked them to hook up to our services, we've asked them to pave it, to kind of do it the right way. And I think of all the wedding barns that this council has approved recently, this is one that's probably in the best location for, from all the other ones that we've done. So, thank you.
Other questions for any staff? Otherwise, I'd look for a motion to set a date, a second reading for Tuesday, November 5th on this one?
So moved.
Second.
All right, that motion is made by Erickson, seconded by Selberg. Any discussion on that, counsel? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Move on, item 36, please.
Item 36, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 5201 South Cliff Avenue from the AG Agriculture Industrial District to the O Office District, including conditions as allowed in Section 160.650E, placing limitations on regulations within this O Office District, number 11004-2019, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommended approval five to zero with the following condition, RE1 Limited Retail Employment Form is not allowed on this parcel. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 5th, 2019.
The applicant and owner here is Lincoln County Rural Water. It's located at the northwest corner of Cliff Avenue and 61st Street. You can see by the aerial, there currently is two old Lincoln County Rural Water tanks on it, and then a cell tower. Those tanks were abandoned a couple of years ago and no longer needed by their system. So Lincoln County Rural Water is looking at selling this parcel. It's currently zoned agricultural. They are looking to zone it to office and then try and market it for an office use. Staff felt that the office zoning district does allow some limited retail. This specific area has kind of a long history of working with the neighbors and not allowing retail this far south. So we felt that it was prudent to limit this site and not allow any retail at all, and the applicant's fine with that condition, so.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public want to speak on this one tonight? Counselors, do you have any questions for Jason on this one?
Move to set the second reading to Tuesday, November 5th.
Second, Neitzert.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Neitzert on that. Any discussion, counsel? We'll call for a vote, please.
Councilmembers Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Item 37.
Item 37, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 5201 South Cliff Avenue from the AG Agriculture Industrial District to the O Office District, including conditions as allowed in Section 160.650E, placing limitations on regulations within this O Office District, number 11004-2019, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommended approval five to zero with the following condition,
They have requested that we change the name of Ralph Rogers Road to the south of 69th Street to Kirier. And I apologize if I speak that Latin word wrong, but that's what they would like it to be renamed and that is Latin for the word care. And the property, this change only impacts one property owner, which is the Avera Hospital. And Public Works, a committee of fire, Public Works, Fire Rescue and GIS have reviewed the petition and do support the name change. And currently right now, the street is constructed about 800 feet to the south of 69th Street and then will be eventually connected over to Louise at 74th Street. And that is all I have for you. Do you have any questions?
All right. Thank you, Shannon. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Councilors, do you have any questions for Shannon on this? Look for a motion, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 12 on this.
Move approval.
Second, Sale.
All right, motion by Selberg on that, seconded by Councilor Sale. Any discussion? We'll take a vote, please.
Council members, Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Onto item 38, please.
Item 38. First reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by revising Chapter 90, Animals and Fowl, to allow hobby beekeeping. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November 5, 2019.
Councilor Staley.
Hello, I'm, I'm the city staff to start this thing off with. This issue on beekeeping emerged several months ago after the Argus leader read an article discussing beekeeping classes in Sioux Falls. And this article pointed out that it was, while they were teaching beekeeping classes at the Arboretum and the Butterfly House, that it was illegal to keep bees in the city. So after that, and some Facebook postings that got lots of support, we won't go into those yet, Jim. We had a community meeting and we received input from beekeepers, city staff and interested citizens. I am very grateful for the efforts that Councilor Brecky put forth along with our staff member, Jim David. And they worked to, well, we all kind of worked to look at these ordinances from different municipalities, how they handled beekeeping. And Councilor Brecky's worked hard with our legal team and I know she's going to talk about that in a minute about the health department, or excuse me, Animal Control and Police Department and trying to field all the concerns that may have arisen throughout the community. I have to say personally, I've had nothing but a positive response to this idea of keeping bees. And she, Councilor Brecky's going to talk about this, but we have regulations in place, we have education in place, we've got registration in place. So it's not going to be something that people are just going to be able to throw a few beehives in their backyard and call it good. It's a rather expensive hobby. In the midst of this, we also met with the Park Department and asked them if they would consider planting more butterfly bee-friendly flowers in our public lands. And they were very open to that. Also, they are the, I think it's Code Enforcement, they're going to be updating their brochure to have more bee-friendly and butterfly-friendly flowers that people could be planting in their boulevards and in their yards. So I just wanted to show a few photos just for the public's benefit, anyone who's interested in doing something that's going to bring more, more bees and butterflies to their yard. Here, here we have a Zebrina Hollyhock. You can go to the next one, there, there, you see a little bee inside of a Zebrina Hollyhock. I think they prey like all Hollyhocks. This is Queen Anslace. By the way, these are all beautiful in a bouquet as well as in a landscape within your yard. This gal, Margaret Straley, she comes around every year and tags butterflies through the University of Kansas at Lawrence. You see, she's got a little tag on there and then they put a tag on the butterfly and let it go. She wanders around my yard with a butterfly net. There's a bee balm aptly named because the bees like the balm in the buds. Thank you. There's some more, a bunch of bees. This is a goldenrod they enjoy. These zinnias, I'm telling you people, get some zinnia seeds, throw it in. I plant these like in July. They are fabulous, beautiful colors, but the bees and butterflies are deeply attracted to them. Here's what we call garlic chives. You see Mr. Bee in there? That's a small one, that's a phlox. This, and then we've got these asters. They're the last thing to bloom. I'll tell you what, about a week and a half ago, they were so glorious, pinks and purples and bees and butterflies. There's another zinnia with a B, aster B. Goldenrod. Councilor Erickson was asking me about this a few years ago. I suggested she plant it in a shaded area. That plant right there, you can plant it anywhere, shade, sun, drought, water, these things are wonderful. Butterflies, butterflies. Bee. Garlic chives, petunias, sedum, they like that. Some more of the, more bees, color. Bees, color, and I don't, I don't know what the, oh, that would go back there. Okay, now, let's just talk about this. We also, I just wanted to throw this in because the mosquito sprayer came by my house four times a few weeks ago. And I have had people say, gee, is there a problem with mosquito spraying and bees? And I've been assured by our health department that they do it after dark so that by the time they come around, all the bees and butterflies and probably not fireflies however, but they're undercover so that they're safe. There is, has been discussion about trying to go to some more ecological friendly spraying mechanism, but we haven't got there yet. Any more, Jim? Okay, so that's, that's all I have to say. I'll hand it over to Councilor Brecky.
Her presentation's a lot more fun with the flowers. Mine's going to put the city ordinance up there. But I'll just summarize it for you and I'll just start with, you know, why a bee ordinance? Why do we need an urban beekeeping ordinance? And I really start with why not? And I, I mentioned it at the other day at, when I did the informational meeting on this. It's really more than, for me, this is more than a conversation about bees and urban beekeeping. It's exciting that our state, and I just learned this at the informational from, from Tim Olson, is either number one or two in the nation for honeybees. I didn't know that. And so that makes me feel like I'm even more a part of something bigger. But really what this is for me is a conversation about sustainability. And those are conversations that cities need to begin having because collectively we can have a lar, far larger impact than we can individually. And, and, and just a simple conversation and discussion and working together on something like this can lead to conversations about air quality, about water quality, about environmental sound practices, about global warming. I mean, there, there's a lot of those things that we really need to be starting to think about as we grow into a larger city. And, you know, when we went to National League of Cities, you know, Los Angeles has an entire division called, in a, in a entire center, about a half a block large, you know, that does nothing but work on sustainability. So I think that, that's what, you know, is, is the, I guess, behind, you know, some of my momentum in bringing this ordinance to you. At the end of the day, it's been a lot of fun and I've learned a lot and I, I found it just a, a very pleasant thing to be a part of. So what we were trying to accomplish in the ordinance after we met with, you know, the various, you know, entities and the people that were, you know, interested in doing urban beekeeping and then, you know, some experts in the field. And Tim, by the way, is going to be here for second reading, you know, if we're fortunate enough to have it brought forward. And he will go over it again as he did, you know, he's kind of a, he's one that does classes on beekeeping and we were fortunate to have him be a, a resource for us. Just, he spent a lot, large amount of time educating us and helping us understand what we're trying to do. This was an ordinance that we put together using other cities as models. Rapid City has a bee ordinance. That was really the foundation for ours. And then we also looked at Stillwater, Minnesota and St. Paul, Minnesota. All of these cities have urban beekeeping ordinances. We kind of cut and pasted together based on, we saw what our needs were and none of them have had any problems with them. I did find out that Stillwater has 11, you know, 11, you know, participants in it. It's not for everybody, but for those that want to, I think it's, you know, it's just a small piece of a bigger puzzle. You know, globally, the bee population is diminishing as well as the monarch butterfly population and they continue to diminish over time. So even small things that we can do together, I think help, you know, help, help for the greater good. So the ordinance itself, what we were trying to accomplish when we put it together was I wanted to make it difficult enough to attract those people who were serious about it, who are willing to make the investment in time and money. It's not cheap and it does require some, some unique knowledge. And so we put an educational requirement in, we put in liability waiver, we put in a requirement for a flyover. That's a, you know, a safety mechanism. And we got neighborhood involvement. So we put in some restrictions that require the abiding neighborhoods to have a say in it, both the immediate properties that are abiding the beekeeper and 100, 100 feet out from that, 80% have to agree. So we put in some safety protections, an education piece, and roughly the cost is anywhere between $1,000 and $1,500. So it's not something that, again, there's probably going to be a long line of people that want to do, but for that, you know, five to 10 to 12 people that might want to invest in this opportunity, I think it's going to benefit our city. And I, I think it's going to, you know, just, you know, create that kind of attitude that that we're the kind of city that cares about our environment and wants to be a part of the solution. That's all I have for you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, answer them. The ordinance itself is, again, fairly complicated. We spent a lot of time on it and we've had, you know, some other changes. I did talk to zoning and we made a few changes that they requested. So I think we've kind of incorporated everything that anybody brought to us into it. But if you have any technical questions, you know, I can answer them or I'm sure Jim David can help because he at the end was putting in some of these recommendations.
Thank you, Councilor Brecky.
I would like to end, this is just kind of a fun story that should happen. I was at South Dakota Municipal League this last week and that was the picture in my room. And I, I couldn't, I didn't even notice the first date. All of a sudden I stood back and said, oh my gosh. I think it's from South Dakota. Maybe I'm imagining, I think, I think that that theme in that hotel seemed to have a lot of pictures that looked to me to be rural South Dakota. But that was just a beautiful picture of beehives and rural, and I believe rural South Dakota. And so I thought I'd share that with you. It seemed like it was just kind of fun that that happened to me this week while I'm working on the bee ordinance. So, want to end with a positive. No, I want to show a picture too.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this? Now's your time, man. Thanks for hanging around.
Yeah. Hi again, I'm John Walker from Augustana University. I'm a sophomore government major. We've, we, I like the proposed amendment and I think it looks good and will do a lot of good for the community if it goes into effect. At Augustana University, we have a lot of students that I know that would like to have a hive on campus, but after looking at the proposed amendment, we, I had seen that it might be not, we might not be able to have a campus, have a campus hive. And we just wanted, I wanted to address that and see if that would be possible for us to have one. And if not, I still like the current amendment, but I would like a further amendment to be put in that would allow for university hives within the city. I know that Black Hills State University has been named a bee campus and I would like that for one day to be at Augustana. And to even start, we need to first have approval from the city that we can't even move into trying to do that. So, yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you, John. Anyone else here to speak on this one tonight? All right, councilors, do you have question? Actually, let's move into a motion that we can have discussion amongst your colleagues. So, Councilor Brecky, want to make a motion?
Moved to approve. Brecky?
Second, Staley.
All right, so we got a motion and a second on the floor. All right, discussion, council? Councilor Sale.
Based on this young man's input, I think your work might not be done, Councilor Brecky.
You know, I, I did get an email from him and I, I, I would like him to start with animal control because there, there, we've worked hand and glove with them and they're actually developing the permit process. And if there does end up needing to be, you know, some additional amendment and we could maybe look what's going on in Spearfish, is that what you said, the Black Hills State? You know, I would be glad to bring forth an amendment. If we, if they feel like we could, you know, do it, they have the location and the ability to do it safely, why, I would be glad to bring forth the amendment. So I'm, I'm excited that you're excited.
They're the Yellow Jackets, if I recall, so makes some sense. Councilor Erickson.
Just to follow up on that, I would be curious too. So I don't know if, if he needs to follow up with them or if that's something that you need to do just based on working for the ordinance, but I'd like to see, I mean, it's not until November 5th, so we have some time to do it, but I, I certainly would, would like to see what that could look like, if that's something that should be added in there or not.
That's a good point. We've got two weeks, don't we? So, you know, why don't I have Jim David follow up with animal control and see how they see this working out and, you know, we can just kind of see if there's something that might, we might add right, you know, at the second reading or if we need a little more time.
Councilor Staley.
Yes, and I did have a conversation with the young man and actually encouraged him to come. Thank you. Welcome to our meeting, government major. There you go, yep. And what I said to him is I, I suggested that maybe we needed to let this thing breathe, see how it works in our community and then add, add an amendment. One of my concerns, I, I don't want to throw cold water on that part of it, but if we do have a provision here where you have to get the, the buy-in from your neighbors, how, I'm just wondering how that works when you've got a bunch of kids in a dorm and you're thinking of this on top, like a rooftop beehive? Yeah, so that, how would, the proximity of, of a lot of people living together could be kind of a challenge that, that's what I was thinking about. So I, I had suggested to him we could get this first part going and then, and he seemed to be agreeable to that and then, and then bring this up at a different time. But yeah, if you want to bring it up now, that's great too.
We'll take a look at it. We've got two weeks, take a look at it.
Perfect. Councilor Erickson.
What is, it does say only 100 feet of the applicant's real estate. And so based on the size of Augustana, I think that that could be certainly doable to say it's in this place, it's next to whatever area and it's just documented in the school's policy of where it's at. But I think it could be a real educational purpose. And if the point of this is to educate people and really promote beekeeping and pollinating the flowers and whatever it is, I mean, why not do it? This is an opportunity to meet with thousands of students that come through on an annual basis for many different reasons. Not that they're going to be the beekeeping capital of Sioux Falls, but it's certainly an opportunity for, for them to learn and grow for that reason. I, I don't want, to steal the words of the previous counselor, throw cold water on it either, but I have been contacted by a handful of people through my school that my kids go to as well as on email of people with real concerns with the, the ability of, of, you know, you have an allergy to bees regardless of the probability of getting stung or not. But there, there is a concern of folks in the community as well. I listened to Belfridge and there were some great concerns on Belfridge as well the other day, a couple of weeks ago. And so I don't want that to go unsaid. I don't want it to go unsaid as well that in Sturgis, South Dakota, South Dakota, during a beekeeping swap, they tried to put more bees in the hive and I don't know if the person that did it wasn't educated enough on how they did it and they did make some changes on the ordinance, but a dog died and there was several people that got pretty injured for that. And so I don't want that to go unsaid either, that there are risks with this and that this has been done with a fine-tooth comb to making sure that those precautionary elements are in there. But tell that to a mom of a, a young child that has a desolate bee allergy, it's scary. I don't have that, but I have friends that have that. And it, it is, it is a real fear for some. And that sign-off for the homes around there, I think is great. The question that I would have for next reading as well is, is if there's a renewal process? Because if I have a beekeeping hive in my backyard, do I get that forever? Or is it every five years that I then need to go back to those neighbors and say, hey, by the way, I know that Susie Q who lived behind me is gone and now Joe Blow lives there and his son has a severe allergy. Do I owe them an annual report? What, what do I owe them? And so I would throw that question out there that what is that magic number of renewal process? What does that look like? And then the other thing I do want to remind the community is we're talking about a very limited number of, of licenses, five to 10. I mean, we're not talking about 150 beehives that are just going to go in all over town. And that was one thing that I think made the folks that had big concerns about it more at ease knowing that this is not going to just be the wild, wild west of bees. So that's it. and that was one thing that I think made the folks that had big concerns about it more at ease, knowing that this is not going to just be the wild, wild west of bees. So, that's it.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion, a second on the floor on this. Is any other discussion, counsel? All right, let's take a vote on this, please.
Councilmembers, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. We're on item 39.
Item 39, a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving the placement of a sculpture on public property.
Hi, Russ.
Good evening. Mayor, City Council, Sioux Falls. My name is Russ Sorensen, urban planner with the city. With me this evening is Katrina Lear McKenney, president of the All Saints Neighborhood Association, and Cameron Stollheim, the local sculptor. Here this evening, this resolution is for approving the placement of a bronze sculpture known as Feather on public property located within Lion Park at the southeast corner of 14th Street and Phillips Avenue on the edge of our downtown area. The All Saints Neighborhood Association was awarded 2019 city neighborhood grant funding for the fabrication and installation of this sculpture project. The Neighborhood Association commissioned the artist Cameron Stollheim as their sculptor artist and selected one of his sculpture designs this past summer. The sculpture would be fabricated in bronze and measure approximately six feet in height and be placed on an existing four-foot-tall quartzite pedestal. The sculpture and the All Saints Neighborhood have been working with the city's art conservation consultant, RLA, on this project, and as the neighborhood intends to gift this sculpture to the city, adding to the city's permanent artworks collection, it would be included in the city's annual artwork conservation maintenance program as well. Both the city visual arts commission and the Parks and Recreation Board have both reviewed this request and unanimously recommend approval of this sculpture and its placement within Lion's Park. Cameron, or Katrina, do you have anything further to add?
Nailed it, Russ. All right.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this topic tonight? All right, counselors, do you have questions for Russ, or Katrina, or Cameron?
If I would.
Yes, sir.
This photograph above you, at your screens, is, was taken today by the artist, and it's about 90% complete in its clay form, so it's ready to go to the foundry.
Love it. Great. I'd love to see a motion to approve this item.
Move to approve, Starr.
Second, Brecky.
All right, motion approved by Counselor Starr and seconded by Counselor Brecky. Any discussion on this one, counsel? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmembers, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Thank you, guys, for that project. Next item, please.